So we are recording. Here comes somebody else. People are still streaming in. So I'm just going to give them time to come join. Okay. All right, so we're up to thirty-three participants. Thirty-four. I'd like to thank you all for being here, joining us on the Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, School Board Workshop via Zoom. It's six-thirty at night. The topic of conversation for tonight is diversity, equity, and inclusion in the Cape Elizabeth schools. Sorry, people keep coming in. So before we begin, I just wanted to share something I wrote beforehand that what I've learned since the brutal killing of George Floyd is that white privilege is real. Simply because of the color of our skin, white people are born into privilege and advantage. For example, I have a seventeen-year-old, almost eighteen-year-old son, and I don't have the same worries as a black woman. I don't worry when he goes out that he won't come home because he's put his hand in his pockets. But what I've also learned is that although white people, myself included, may think we are not racist, this is not enough. It's not good enough. Silence, standing by while white systems remain in place and not fighting for change can somehow be a part of not being racist and living a not racist life. But again, this is not enough. We need the next level. We need to be anti-racist and truly stand for equality by breaking our silence and allowing working towards and creating real change. Black lives matter is important because until black people, Muslims, Hispanics, and other minorities are truly given the same opportunities, all lives can't matter. We have an opportunity here in Cape Elizabeth to make real change, to educate teachers and staff more about anti-racism and what it truly means. We have an opportunity to move forward with curriculum and education that highlights black people and their history. We can shine the light on a, in, we can shine the light on equality for all by being conscious to the ways we can improve and educate our students. We are an excellent district and we are doing some of the work, no doubt. And there's always room to improve. I am proud of our students and proud of our teachers, our administrators, and I'm proud of Cape Elizabeth. I really look forward to tonight's meeting, hearing the ways that we already addressed inequality in our district. And I'm excited to hear from the forward-thinking teachers and staff who have been a part of Racial Equality Institute training. We will move forward together, as Superintendent Wolfram has said many times, with arrows pointing in the same direction. And those arrows will point towards equality for all as we do this together. So again, thank you so much for being here, Donna.
So our goal tonight really is to gain a better understanding of where the district is regarding efforts to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in Cape Elizabeth schools in order to develop a plan to move forward with this vision. Now, as teachers, we're taught to assess where our students are and then make a plan to move them forward, each one from, from where they are. So as a district, it's important that we take this time to reflect on, on what we have done and knowing that we have a lot to learn, we have a lot of work to do, start to develop a plan to make, to, to move forward. So tonight, we're going to be hearing, as Heather said, from, from several people in the district. And I hope that others will join in. There'll be an opportunity for others to join in. So Kathy Stankert, our Director of Teaching and Learning, is going to talk a little bit about curriculum and professional development that we're looking at. Jason Mandarides and Bree Gallagher are going to talk about their experience with Racial Equity Institute training. There's a GSCA Leadership Academy. Participants are here tonight and they're going to talk about a project they did and then how their thoughts, I think this is what they're going to talk about, how their thoughts have changed a bit about, about moving forward and, and taking that knowledge and, and moving forward in the district. And then we will have a discussion about, about moving forward. Where do we go from here? And I know that Town Council met last night and they're very interested in forming a committee with, with the staff or school board members to talk about moving forward in Cape Elizabeth. So I'll turn it back to you, Heather.
Hey. Kathy, would you like to start and talk to us about the curriculum and professional development?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to start just by acknowledging that I am approaching this discussion with, with a sense of humility that, that while my intention tonight is to provide a brief account of where we are in terms of our curriculum and professional development and to make some suggestions for moving forward that I, I don't in any way pretend to have all the answers and, and can't even speak as well about some of our curricular and professional development initiatives as some of the people who've actually engaged in that work. Having said that, I'm, I'm really excited to be part of the beginning of this conversation. And, and I hope our district is going to have it for, excuse me, some time to come. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I think I have the ability to do that.
No, we, we might have to, oh. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Then minimize here. Okay, so you can all see that, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, I've now lost the ability to see anyone. So if there are questions as we go, perhaps Heather, you could just interrupt me?
Yeah, I can try. I only see about five of us. I see myself, Donna, you, Del, Jason, and Phil. So.
Okay.
Do you want questions throughout it, Kathy?
Maybe I'll go through the whole thing and then take the questions afterward. Yeah, I, I think, I think just because of limitations of the technology, that might be, that might be better, so.
Yeah, so let's hold questions.
Okay.
I would recommend, yeah, somebody's giving a suggestion. People write, you could write your questions in the chat. And then I could share questions perhaps. That's a great suggestion. So if you have a question for Kathy, write it in the chat. Does that sound okay?
Yep, that sounds great.
Okay.
All right, terrific. And, and as I mentioned, I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that my internet connection holds. But in any case, when I was thinking about tonight's presentation and how best to, how best to present where we are in terms of our curriculum and professional development, where we might want to go, I was looking for a framework and, and I found one in the work of a woman named Dina Simmons. So Five Steps on How to Be an Anti-Racist Educator. And, and I thought taking the time to, to consider each of the points that she makes and, and where we are in relation to those points might, might be useful for us. So the first thing is that, that she suggests is to engage in vigilant self-awareness. So specifically as asking ourselves these questions, how does your identity provide or prevent access to necessary resources? How does your power and privilege show up in your work with students, take up space, or silence others? What single narratives are you telling yourself about students? And how does that affect grading, behavior management, and other interactions? And do you and the academic materials you use uphold whiteness or lift up the voices and experiences of people of color? And then the second step would be to acknowledge racism and the ideology of white supremacy. So with those two things in mind, then, I'd like to talk a little bit about our curriculum and professional development. In terms of our curriculum, within our English Language Arts curriculum, I think I want to, I want to mention the CEIP grant that was awarded to Pond Cove in two thousand and seventeen. It was entitled Building Understanding and Respect for Cultural Diversity Through Children's Literature. And as a result of this grant, teachers were able to purchase classroom libraries that included the works of diverse authors and that focused on issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then they were also given some professional development in the teaching of, of those specific books and then also in how to apply what they learned to, to literature they would be coming across in, in successive years. It's also become apparent to me in talking with teachers, and I know we have a couple of English teachers present tonight, that many of them are choosing to teach in their required and elective courses a diverse range of authors so that they are, they are.
Oh, did she freeze?
Yep. She'll come back. Hopefully. I'm going to send her a little. Uh-oh, Kathy.
Well, we may want to.
There she is.
Oh, she's back. Okay.
Nope, that was you, actually. I just sent her a chat. Maybe she got it.
Oh.
Nope, she's totally gone because her PowerPoint is gone.
So, yeah, why don't we move on and maybe she'll come back in?
Yep. Yeah, hopefully she'll ask to be admitted. I see her there, but she's still frozen, so. Oh, unfortunate. Okay. So we're going to move on to Jason Mandarides and Bree Gallagher for the Racial Equity Institute training to talk to us about that.
Great, thank you. I'm Jason Mandarides, the Principal of Pond Cove, and Bree Gallagher is here as well, our Guidance Counselor from Pond Cove. We're, we're happy to be here tonight to share a little bit about some of the training that we've started and some of the plans that were, we were beginning to put in motion this past school year before the, the school closure. So last year in November, I attended a training put on by the Racial Equity Institute and they're out of Greensboro, North Carolina. And I, my wife is also an educator and she was attending the training and she told me about it. So I started to read up on, on the organization. And this is work that I'm, I'm quite passionate about. And what really drew me to them was their approach. So rather than a, a, you know, one hour or a three-hour sit and get PD, it's really, if you, if you go through the series of trainings, it's an eighteen-month to two-year experience and training experience. And so it's really all about joining the conversation and acknowledging kind of what's going on. And rather than focusing on, you know, individual bigotry and bias, it, the training really focused, the, the Phase One training that I attended really focuses on institutions and centuries' worth of history and how racism is, is kind of built into systems and institutions in the United States. So it's, it's very interesting. It's not your typical training. When you, when you arrive, there's no tables with white tablecloths and, and water glasses. You're sitting in a circle. Nothing in between you and the other. I think there are, maybe it's capped at like twenty-five members, about twenty-five students. And you're facing each other and having difficult, challenging conversations the entire time. It's really powerful. I'm going to kind of let Bree fill in before I, I say too much. Bree, I see you down there.
Here I am. Bree Gallagher, School Counselor at Pond Cove. So I actually attended the training that was, I believe, in January at USM because my sister inconveniantly decided to have a baby on the very day that I was supposed to go to Jason's. So I did the training a couple of months later, but I also had a really powerful experience. I, I will, I will admit that I kind of went into it being like, well, I've done a lot of workshops, I've done a lot of sessions, I know about, you know, racial equity, I know about equality, I, you know, I've kind of got this. And I was amazed and shocked at all of the things that I learned. All of the, one of, one of the things I think is really powerful about the Phase One training is it really focuses on the historical pieces of racism, like the why, where the term race originated and why racism exists and how it's maintained and, and why it's continued to be maintained. So that, for me, gave me incredible amounts of insight. I don't think I really understood what systemic or structural racism was prior to that two-day training. So it's really, I think, I think the piece for me that made me feel like it was, it was helpful was because it's so powerful and so deep. But one of the things that I think is maybe a pro and a con is it's, it's, it's long-term work. Like the, the, the Phase One is kind of like, slow your roll. Like, stop asking now what, right? And I'm like a now what person. Like, I want to do it. Okay, what, what should I go do? What do I have to bring back to the school? What, what do I have to be doing? And it's like, no, you're not ready. You, you need more, you need more information, you need more learning, you need more analysis. It's really about analysis and looking at systems and figuring out like, what's the root? And how do we need to change it? And it really made me look at the things I thought I was doing that were really great. And, you know, like I have diverse books. So we did that CEIP grant a couple of years ago. Like, I really, really pushed myself to make sure that my books were first featuring kids of all colors and then written by authors of all colors. And I thought like, oh, good job, Bree. And I gave kids opportunities to talk about difference and when issues of race were brought up, like I said yes to the conversation, especially when it was a student of color. I'm like, oh, great job. And I think what the training brought out is just how much is woven into our systems and that that kind of work is just, it's not enough. And it needs, it, there, there needs to be deeper work. And I know a lot of people that I'm seeing on this Zoom call have mentioned about, you know, that we need to have, we need to have black history and Native American history and woven into everything that we're doing. We really need to make sure that this is like what we do all the time. And it's not this separate thing. It's not a guidance, school counseling thing. It's an everybody thing. So I, I could go on and on. The, the, the training was like, you left every day like, I need a nap. And I, I think running around after five hundred and fifty kids at school usually makes me feel like that. But this was, this was really, it was, it was heavy but really important work. I don't know, Donna, if we should take questions. Like I said, there's like, there's so much.
Jason, did you have anything else that you wanted to say?
No, just so, I mean, you know, the plan that Bree and I had, had formulated it was to, you know, to train, I, I went to a training, Bree went. And then our Assistant Principal, Sarah Forey-Pedditt, was going to go to one. And of course, now they're not, they're, they're, they're remote. And so, I mean, as much as we're urgent to move forward, we question the, the power of it remotely. But, I mean, we, we hope that they start offering them live again soon. But then, so just very quickly to explain the process. So what happens is if you go, you go to Phase One training and then before you can go to Phase Two, you need to go to Phase One again and sit in the outer circle and just watch others receive the Phase One training. And you can go back as many times as you want for a phase that you paid for. And so the plan was for Bree and Sarah and myself to go back to, to send groups, small groups of staff to Phase One, and then one of us would sit in the outer circle and support them in that way. And so it would just snowball and others could support their colleagues that way over the next few years. But, so everything live is on hold for now. Yeah, we could take questions. I mean, we're not experts, so we, we just, just started this. But anybody has any questions?
Yeah. So I just want to sort of, as I run the meeting, typically in a workshop at this point, and I'm looking to other people's faces who are on the board and Donna and Jason, it's time for board members and administrators to ask the questions. But I feel like this is such an important conversation that I would like to open it up to everybody. And I just want to get a nod from the school board members' faces if they feel like that's okay with them or where you stand. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of agreement of that. So it, this conversation can be beyond the board and the administrators and to anybody who has questions regarding what Jason and Bree had spoken about. And please apologize, there's forty-one people. I'm going to be scrolling up and down and try to see if I see a hand. But if I miss you, please just start to speak up. I'm not seeing any hands raised. I see Phil personally raising his hand, so I'm going to call on you, Phil. Go ahead.
Thank you. And that was very interesting. I didn't know that some of our staff or administrators had trained, had attended Racial Equity Institute. I became first aware of that institution by the Seeing White podcast, which I listened to a couple of years ago, and which was a fantastic program. I think I mentioned it to the school when I first joined at our, at our visiting session we had, and I would still recommend it. It's, it's just a fantastic program which really opened my eyes to a lot of things. It's through the, it's through the Seen on Radio. That's the overall, but it's the second season of Seen on Radio. It's called Seeing White by John Buwen and Chin Dray Kumnikah. And then my law firm actually brought in, and this is where my question comes, my law firm actually brought in the Racial Equity Institute for a general training. It's clearly not going to be as intensive as, as people need, but, but we felt it was important to bring it to the whole firm and they do that kind of thing. And I know they have an outpost in Lewiston. And what I was wondering is, obviously it's a challenging budget environment, but this is important, important to spend our money on, is if there's anything we could do back when it's, when we do get together, or maybe even a remote way, that would open it up beyond, you know, a few people who could attend. And even, even if it's sort of an initial introductory session, I think that's at least an important step to start the conversation that way.
Nah. Okay.
So I think.
Okay, sorry.
I, I think, so to answer, was it Phil? Is that who was talking? To answer whose question, I think Kathy, before she got cut off, was going to talk about how she has looked into the cost and what it might look like to have REI come to us. So I think that's an avenue that's being explored, but that, my understanding that was part of, you know, coming here today was to talk about, you know, different next steps and kind of look at, you know, what might be the best fit. But yes, I think that's something that, you know, Jason, when, when he had, when he had come to me about the, the training, his, you know, he, there was always a plan to train more and extend it out as we were able to afford. So sorry, Jason, I totally spoke for you.
No, I think that's great, but I think Kathy's. I don't know if Kathy can talk, can, can say anything now.
I can. I'm living in fear of my internet connection going unstable once more. For those of you who don't know, I am in Garrett County, Maryland, which is the westernmost county in Maryland. It was the only week of the entire summer that my entire family could gather together. And so here I am. So my apologies. I'm not sure when I got cut off exactly. I'd like to go back to the presentation.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Wishful thinking.
Maybe.
She was good this morning. We had a meeting and she was fine, but.
I do know that there are a few other questions out there. So while she's on hold and especially before we go on to her presentation, I'm going to call on Gina Tapp. So if you want to unmute yourself. And Gina, there we go. Should be all set. Hi.
So I was wondering, from what I was listening to, that sounds like a really good plan, but like, what happens in the case of you got a like ninety-nine point nine percent white student population and all of a sudden you get a student of color or a student from another country or whatever, like, can the, can the plan be adapted to like, okay, now we have a real situation, we need to adapt to it in real life versus our plan is in three months, we do this, in six months, we do this, in one year, we do this. How, how does that like, how does like real-world situations factor into the plan?
Sure. So, I mean, I guess I can speak to that a little bit. I mean, we, those real-life situations occur all the time, which is, which is, you know, what made us realize how important this work is. So, I mean, in terms of, can, can you, can you elaborate a little bit more on like how a plan might be adjusted? I mean, so where, where, I think the plan would be to move forward with as much momentum as, as time and money would allow. But so could you, could you add to that a little bit so I could understand?
So I'll give you my real-life example, which is we took in our daughter who came from the DRC from the Expo in August of last year, and we brought her to Cape Elizabeth Schools and had her meet with Guidance Counselors and got her all signed up. And she, like, everybody, like, just came in and did whatever was needed. And she had a great first freshman year. And I'm thinking, okay, so here's this real-life experience where this thing happened and everybody did what was necessary and learned and did what was needed. How does that fit into like the overall plan of, okay, we're going to do this?
Yeah, I mean, Bree might be able to speak to it better, but I think, I mean, it, the overall plan is to like build that capacity for everyone to have a deeper understanding and, and just respond to every situation appropriately. Do you have anything to add, Bree?
Yeah, I think, um, like going back to what I said before, that before I took the training, I was like, you know, I think I do these things well, like when a student makes a racially insensitive comment, I feel like I've done a good job supporting the student who was, who was hurt by, by the comment, helping to teach and support the student that made the comment and their families. So that, I, I'm connecting that in that when we've had students that are from different backgrounds, have, speak different languages or are from different cultures, we do rally around those kids. And we're lucky here in Cape to have the resources to be able to do that. And I do think we do that well. I think the hope and the dream is for everyone to, to have the capacity to be able to really think about our whole system and how we create a system that everybody, whether you're new, like, it's almost, in some ways, it's almost easier when a kid is like, which it sounds like with, with, with your daughter, is that right, Gina? That it sounds like with your daughter, it was really clear, okay, she's going to need supports, right? I sometimes worry about the kids that it's not always that clear. And I've heard some of our students of color that are students. I was like, oh, my gosh, I, I didn't know that they were struggling. I didn't know that they felt that way, right? Like, we want, we want to create a system where we're noticing all of those things and we're asking those questions and we're really analyzing all the time. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I think, I'll just add to that, that I think the Cape has done an amazing job at just recruiting and choosing educators that regardless of this is, whether or not this is their area of expertise, they're just such great educators that they naturally know what they need to do to help students, whether or not, you know, equity and diversity happens to be their expertise. They're just fabulous. And I just feel really thankful that we've had that experience with the Cape Schools.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm probably pronounced your name wrong. I apologize. Shakria? You have your hand up? Please unmute and you can speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, thank you, and you said my name perfectly. I I apologize, I'm coming a little late to the discussion. I did hear Gina Tap's comments, and just to let you know, she is an HR manager in City of Portland, and I work in City of Portland as well. I do appreciate what she's saying. I I think, you know, a lot of us gravitate towards, you know, to Cape Elizabeth for the schools and only for the schools. We were, we've been here for we moved here, and my niece was two months old, my eldest niece was two months old, so that's about twenty-three years. We've been here in grew up in Portland, came here to Cape Elizabeth about twenty-three years ago. And I left, I had gone to college, came back and actually moved to Cape Elizabeth and, you know, paid into the taxes until my kids could take, you know, basically join. But it's, I appreciate what you're saying. I appreciate what you're doing. I think a lot of things are being done because I, you know, as you know, the Cape Diversity Coalition came out of, I think we're telling this story so many times now, but the coalition came out of two of my niece and nephew being treated wrong when the day of the election, when Trump was, I don't want to say Trump, but this current administration was had won, and people were telling my, you know, my nephew to go back to his country, and he didn't make a big deal out of it. Thank God, there was another person who was standing there, heard all of it, and did mention it to Mr. Shad, who's on this call too. And I think the discussion has started four years ago with all this. It has started with that. It's been very, very difficult. I believe, you know, having a parent who can advocate for you, and then having a parent, a person of color, maybe a language barrier, it's hard. It is definitely definitely hard. Like I said, I appreciate what Gina had to say, because I think as a person who can speak English and speak up for their kids, it's great, you know? But we need to, I think we need to take the conversation to another level. We need to hear from people of color. We need to hear from the the diverse population of Cape Elizabeth. We need to hear from the minorities from Cape Elizabeth. And I'm not sure how many of you had attended the rally. It was Wednesday. There was one on Sunday with the parents, and there was one day. It was humongous. There were so many people showed up, not as many as people I would love for. Now, I know there's more people there in Cape that who believe in this. And it it was, it was really emotional, all the voices of the kids, current kids, ten-year-old kids talking about, you know, about his racism here in Cape Elizabeth to people who graduated, people have been called the N-word, people have been called terrorists. We need to address that. Why don't I appreciate, like I said, I have to understand, I appreciate all the training that the teachers are going. But four years ago, we we stated, we need someone that looks like us. We need someone that speaks like us. We need someone that represents our culture. We have a, you know, a ELL program, but it's run by a white person. And why can't we hire someone who has different culture behind them, who comes from multiple, multiple cultures? We need to have these discussions. We need to open this workshop to the people, and we have to listen. We have to listen, because you can't make progress without listening to all these stories that have been going on in Cape Elizabeth. And I honestly think so much, but after hearing these kids talk, it hurts you. It pulls at your heartstrings. It's 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 not pretty. It is not pretty, and we are you know, we're an exceptional group here in Cape Elizabeth, and I think we can, we can be the leaders of a diverse, you know, so-called UN town when it comes to school, and, you know, teachers are everything. Teachers, it begins with the teachers. All of this begins with the teacher. I won't even go towards what needs to be taught in school or what needs to be there in school. But I just want to, I want to ask you, if you could please open up the forum for people to voice their concerns or their stories with you. That will be great. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, Shakria. I have Melanie Thomas has raised her hand. If you want to unmute and speak. Melanie?
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. I I think this workshop is great. I'm more about moving forward and wanting to see some action. I have a rising seventh grader and a rising fourth grader in the Cape Elizabeth school systems, and I just don't want the school systems to fail my children the way I was failed growing up here in Maine and going through the entire school systems here at Maine. And that was a while ago, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about how you're implementing changes, what you're going to do, hiring more people of color, changing your curriculum, promoting Black history, Native Americans, more books of color, and of course, training. I I do like what I'm hearing about that, but I I'd like to see more of that, and most of these things should have been done a long time ago to at least represent us or school, even the ninety-nine percent that are white here, that they need that education as well. They they need to see it, know it, and have good conversations about it. So I'm more about changing policies, and I I'm looking forward to that. Like I said, I have been through the school systems here in Maine, and it's very lacking. It was very shameful. And by the time I got into high school, I was very lost. I mean, saying the Pledge of Allegiance and liberty and justice for all got really tiring around high school when I realized there aren't liberties and justice for people of color. I I had no African-American teachers. I I had nobody of any type of color to represent me, and I certainly wasn't taught that. And I just don't think it is the parent's responsibility at all times to teach their children of color. I I think it's it's twofold, that white people need to know it, black people need to know it, Native Americans, we all need to know that. And I also think that Kate could change the narrative. More more people will look at you and what you're doing and the stances that you're making and the implementations that you're making to make our school system better for all, and and I believe they'll they'll follow your lead. So I I'm I'm looking for that to be done, in action to be done immediately, and not just on paper, but I want I want I want to see that. I want to see that for my kids. I do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Melanie. And just a reminder that if you have spoken and you're complete, if you could put your hand down digitally, that will help me know that you don't have anything more to say. There's a woman, Sarah, S A I R A, that had her hand raised, and she just disappeared. Oh, there you are, great.
Yeah, I lowered my hand. Yeah. Hi, I'm Sarah Shear. I'm Nasser's daughter and Shakria's niece. So, yeah, so how my onset. The protest from, I think it was probably a week and a half ago, it was it was great. A lot, a lot of Cape students, current students and alumni talked, and we were there until very, very late, like nine-thirty, and it really dawned to me that we were there so late, and there were so many students, it was because that the Cape students, people of color have been silenced for so long, and their voices aren't being heard by the Cape schools, which is very unfortunate and disappointing. I personally went through the Cape systems too. I went to Poncove, the middle school and high school. And I can say that everything I have learned was from outside of Cape Elizabeth, and I have learned nothing beneficial with Black history or other experiences in Cape Elizabeth. And it's that's unfortunate, because Cape has a reputation, it's known as an elite school, when you're, we're literally being taught the same thing as during high school, or Portland High School, or Scarborough. So, yeah, that was very disappointing at the protest. I'm glad people did show up. I would have loved to see more people, but it's a pandemic, so we can't really and not have everyone show up. But I want to talk about the kids and the how their racism is affecting people of color, students, and Black people students as well. We, this not, is bullying, and then it's racism on top, is traumatizing for them, and is deteriorating their mental health, which as a school, you guys shouldn't be acting upon. You guys should try to look for ways to decrease that. Also, the implicit bias and racism just doesn't come from the students. It also comes from the teachers, from teachers having to read, saying the N-word during, when reading books allowed during classes, and thinking that it's okay. That enforces students to think that it's okay to say the N-word, so they continue saying the N-word. Also, students, sorry, teachers who mistake one person of color with another person of color in classes. There's literally, there would be only two students, and they would mix them up. And also the fact that teachers are culturally appropriating Black culture. There is, there are teachers, there was a teacher who had dreadlocks, and Black students are expelled, fired from the job because of dreadlocks, so I don't know how you guys want to address that, but that is concerning. Also, so what I would like to see in Cape, since I I'm out of it, but I still have cousins and siblings in the system. You guys need to change your curriculum, first of all, especially history curriculum during junior year. There's a one year of US history, and barely any time is spent on Black history or Native American history. And that needs to be changed. Literally, you can take one month out of the whole school year, and you can use Netflix shows or books to educate the students, which is very important. Also, bias training for teachers is very, very important, because since they are the ones who are teaching the kids. So what they are teaching needs to be correct, and it needs to be taught properly. Lastly, students who say racist or Islamophobic or xenophobic or homophobic things need to be held accountable. They they will grow up to be racist teachers, lawyers, healthcare workers, or law enforcement, and the cycle will just continue. So as a school system, it's your job to stop the formation of these kinds of people. And it also goes, yeah. But, yeah, that's all I want to say. I really do want to see change in Cape Elizabeth schools. It is a good school, but it has to be better, especially since you got, we had, is literally less than a hundred residents, I'm sure, of other people of color. And if you guys can back them up, then that's really concerning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to get to Maureen Clancy in just a second, but I just want to bring attention to the group chat, that there is some conversation happening, some resources being written down and offered, I'm sorry, being offered, so to take a little peek at that. Maureen, thank you for being here. Go ahead, if you can unmute. And then you have the floor. Is Maureen here? Clancy? Okay. I was just frozen. But it looks like I'm not frozen anymore. Has Maureen spoken up?
No.
No. Okay. And I don't see anybody else with questions at this point. I'm looking. Maureen, send me a private chat if you've got this and would like to speak again. And I think we have Kathy back with a hotspot. Ready to go? Yep. It's a charm, girl. Let's do it.
Okay, hopefully, three times is a charm. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right. Good, okay, great, all right. So unfortunately, I've missed a lot of the conversation, and so I guess I'll just proceed as though I, all right, I'm getting nods from several people, so I will I will do that. And go right back to where I believe I left off, which was with, which was with the discussion of the work that we're starting to do around Maine Native Americans at Poncove. Is that correct?
Right, that's good.
All right. Okay, all right, good, so. All right. So, so as I mentioned, the the Maine Department of Education has revised its social studies standards, and they're giving greater weight now appropriately to the experience of Maine Native Americans. And I think that it, so it is our intention to devote the second grade social studies curriculum to to as much of an in-depth exploration of the Maine Native Americans as you can get at that age. But I think, and I did hear this, I think it's important to note that it is, it is not enough to do a one and done, and that we need to integrate our study of the Maine Native Americans throughout our curriculum, and not just have this be something that the that the second grade teachers are taking on, and nobody else has to think about it in the same way that Black History Month, while it was well-intentioned, is 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 not enough. And then at the middle school, and again, remember, these are sort of recent initiatives. You're familiar, I I believe, with the sabbatical proposal that is going to be, once Laura Briggs has completed it, is going to be looking at US history in the eighth grade through the lens of migration, and that is going to include a required field service component. But that is, again, a way of of looking at the American experience in the eighth grade that we have not done before. Then at the high school, the Holocaust course has adopted the excuse me, the Facing History in Ourselves curriculum, and this is this is a curriculum that starts by asking students to consider their identity, and Mary Page, who who teaches this course, shared with me a story that I thought was instructive, and I wanted to share it, that at the beginning, she asked students to label themselves, and she observed that, you know, who are they? And she observed that when she has students of color in her class, that they will refer to themselves as Black or to or Brown, or perhaps they're Muslim, or they're gay. But that the students who who comprise that majority don't think to label themselves as white or as Christian or as heterosexual. And so that, that I think is starting to get at the identity work, I hope, that Gina Simmons was referring to. And then we have some of our US history teachers working with the sixteen-nineteen project. Some of you may be familiar with this. This is initiative started by Nikole Hannah-Jones of the New York Times Magazine, but looking at the experience of African-Americans, sixteen-nineteen is when Um, but looking at the experience of African Americans, 1619 is when African slaves were first brought to the North American colonies. Um, and then we also have teachers who are using those in education project lessons. Um, and again, this is an alternative to that standard textbook curriculum Howardson wrote, People's History of the United States. And so it's an effort to, to look at those more diverse voices and not just tell the history from the perspective of the white president, for example. In terms of professional development, Jason and Bree talked about the Racial Equity Institute. We're going to be hearing from folks about the Leadership Academy experience they had this year. So I'll move on to ideas for moving forward. Um, again, uh, this is brainstorming that had occurred as a result of the conversations that I was having in preparation for this, for this workshop. We recognized the need to examine our entire curriculum. This has already been said, I think, by some of the most recent people to speak, whom I got to hear. Um, through an anti-racist lens with the intent, as Dina Simmons says, to lift up the voices and experiences of people of color. Um, I'm happy to report that this work is already starting this summer. Several of our teachers applied for summer work projects. They're going to be doing this work in both social studies and in art. Um, and that's K-12. I think it's important that we look at our disciplinary and on honors and AP course enrollment data. Do our, are our students of color being disciplined? Um, the same ratio as they comprise the population and same for their enrollment in our honors and AP courses. And then, as has been discussed, we're hoping to partner with organizations that are skilled at surfacing and addressing individual and systemic racism. Um, in addition to the Racial Equity Institute, there's the Community Change, Inc. Some of you may be familiar with the, with the blog Black Girl in Maine. Um, and the executive director, um, the, the author of that is the executive director of this Community Change, Inc. And that might be an organization we want to consider partnering with. Great Schools Partnership, we, they have been our school coaches for the past three years. They're affiliated with the National Equity Project, another possible organization. And then we have done some work with Caesar's Peace. Honestly, I don't know to what extent they engage this. Alright, returning then to the framework that I began with. Steps three, four, and five in How to Be an Anti-Racist Educator are to study and teach representative history. Again, we've already heard a plea for that. The importance of talking about race with students. Um, and then finally, when you see racism, do something. So again, to what extent are we, are we already doing this? Bearing in mind that there is always room for improvement. So, um, but Poncove, we have a social emotional curriculum called Responsive Classroom. All of our Poncove educators have been trained in this. It is, it's an approach to teaching and, and just discipline that focuses on creating inclusive classrooms and culturally sensitive approaches. I, 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 it's possible that Bree and, and Jason already spoke about Responsive Classroom. Again, I was out for a bit, and if they haven't, and you're interested in that, that's something we could come back to. Um, our counseling curriculum at Poncove and Middle School does touch on, on some of these issues. They focus on empathy building, they focus on identity, on marginalization. And that would be, that, that is throughout Poncove. Um, and then really emphasized in fifth, fifth through eighth grade by our two school counselors. Um, and then the high school socialized curriculum, actually starting in seventh grade. It was, and I, I've seen this in the classes that I observe, that there is an attempt to connect whatever is in the formal, the written curriculum, to things that are happening currently. And then in terms of US history and government, and these are required courses in the eighth grade, the eleventh grade, and the twelfth grade. There are, there are Native American units. There's discussion of IDB Wells, IDW Wells's reporting on lynching. There is attention to the Japanese internment camps. There, to Red Summer, to the Tulsa Massacre. There are, these are things that are discussed in, in our curriculum. Um, and I think we can have conversations about the extent to which they are successful. And, um, and, and, and how we might make it so that our students don't graduate with the perception that they have not been exposed to these, to these topics. Um, as far as student and staff training go, the middle school, um, the middle school, one of the two middle school counselors and then middle school tech integrator, tech integrator run the civil rights team. This, they're a member of the Civil Rights Team Project and they, that is a way for them to address some of these issues. Uh, back in the 2015, 2016 school year, we had Steve Westler from the Center for Prevention of Hate Violence train staff in a train the trainer model. Um, he also worked with students. So that is another possibility. Some administrator to be participating in a four-day summer institute on reimagining education, teaching, learning, and leading for racially just society. We hope too, that will jumpstart the conversation. And then finally, some of you may have read the article in this morning's Bengal Daily News. Got the experience of some Black students at Bengal High School. And I think one of the things that concerned me the most was that, was that the students reported having shared things that happened to them with teachers, with administrators, and that no action was taken. And that, that pained me and I, a great deal. And I just, I, I just wanted to remind everyone that we have, we have policies and procedures that are specifically designed to prevent discrimination and harassment on the basis of race, on the basis of color and religion and gender identity and expression. And if, and, and I realize maybe policies and procedures aren't enough, but I just wanted to emphasize that we, we do have them and we make every effort to follow them. And then connected to that, ideas for moving forward, doing what we're doing right now, which is listening to some of our students and families of color. Studying our, studying these issues. There've been suggestions, main people I've spoken to, that we have community reads and discussions. Um, that we provide cultural competence, anti-bias, anti-racist training to our staff and students. Expand our curricular diversity and beyond what I've, well beyond what I've described tonight. Um, and that we recruit a more diverse faculty.
Does that complete?
And yes, I just wanted to, yes, and that, that, that does, thank you.
Froze. But I, that does, okay. Thank you for that. Um, there are a few hands raised. I'm gonna see if Maureen can come back in now. If you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. I can see you. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, I got a new set of headphones today and I was using them for the first time because my family's sick of listening to me on all my Zooms. And that somehow interrupted my ability to speak. So thank you for allowing me to join you tonight. And thank you for, I think Kathy covered a lot of the issues I was going to say. I think that we have an opportunity, having gone to these workshops. We have an opportunity to listen to our students of color, especially our graduates, and hear their experience and figure this out. I truly believe everyone in Cape Elizabeth schools wants our students to have a wonderful experience. But knowing how to talk about race, knowing how to address these issues, knowing how to deal with them is not always something people have been, are comfortable with and know how to deal with these issues. So I think we really need to explore those things. Um, I would love our community to become more diverse, but that isn't going to happen in the short term. So I think our focus should be becoming an anti-racist school.
Yes, I agree.
Raising kids who will be anti-racist. We are raising the leaders of tomorrow. We know that in our district, a majority of our kids go on to college. They will be the CEOs, the presidents, the superintendents, the principals of tomorrow. And if we don't raise them with an anti-racist framework, then we are failing the future generation in the system. So I think that should be our focus and our intention. And that includes all the things that Kathy just said, looking at our curriculum. If we are going to read Huck Finn and To Kill a Mockingbird, are we prepared to talk about them in the right way? Are we prepared to address this? And are we also showing them and having them read books where people of color are forceful and in good place and not being the people who are being taken care of and the people who are mentally disabled? And we have to show them different views of people. Um, I learned, I feel like my education, after listening to Seeing White and reading other books by Abraham Kendi, I realized how whitewashed my education was. I know about Martin Luther King, I know about Frederick Douglass, but I didn't learn about Angie Thomas or Sojourner Truth or many of the other amazing Black people who, and Hispanics who shaped our world. So we need to look at those pieces. Um, we need to see what they're reading. I really think we have a Holocaust class, which is great, but I really think we should have the history of race in America in our high schools. And we should teach our students those, those classes and those issues. And I think, you know, it's one thing to go to training. It's another thing to figure out how to incorporate this in what we say and do every day. I really think, you know, personally myself, the reason that I, I still feel that I'm a racist, I'm still working towards being an anti-racist, but a lot of it is my experience. I worked with 12 people who come from Asia, Africa, South America, Central America. I now know that Asia is, Africa is not a country, it's a continent. And that Sudan and Somalia and Angola and DRC are all very different places with very different cultures and very different histories. So I think we, having people like that amongst us makes a big difference. So being focused on hiring teachers and administrators and people in our school systems of color will help all of us become more anti-racist. Um, and not to put that pressure on them, but it's just part of the learning, part of being with people who don't look like you is always an important piece of it. So I know that Cape Elizabeth wants to do this, it's just figuring out the right path to, to do it well and to do it efficiently. And I think I was so struck by the speakers of our, our high school students at those forums, and we really need to figure out a way to listen to them, engage them, and ask them to help us move forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, Maureen. I have up next, Kadija. I'm not sure if I said that name right. Are you here? Paul, see your hand up. There's a few other people ahead of you. I will call on you. Kadija, if you get on mute, there you go. Hello.
Hello, hi.
Hi.
So Kadija here. I want to mention a few things. Um, first of all, thank you to you, all of you white people who showed up for this. I'm getting a bit tired of the political correctness of the whole thing, where everybody's trying to say the right things. We have to try and be inclusive, we have to try and do this and that and change schools. But I worry that this being the thing at the moment, at the end of the day, we're gonna go back to what was before. Those, any of you realize the power that you actually do have? Those white people know the privilege that they have as white people. Those white people know how it feels to be Black. So no white person can speak for me and speak about my experience as a Black mother. No white woman can speak about my experience as a Black woman. So I resent the fact that at some point, we're gonna end up hiring or just putting a few teachers into a few seminars and they're gonna come back and try to teach Black history. No white person should be teaching Black history because they don't really know what it means to be a Black person. They don't really understand the whole thing, so they're just gonna take a few courses, not check their white privilege, not check their white fragility. Because there is that also going on where no one is checking their white fragility. No one is checking their white privilege. All of a sudden, now that we all are woke, we can learn about Black history and teach it. I resent that. I would like for Cape Elizabeth to hire Black teachers to come and teach Black history. Even if it wasn't for a full year, even if the teacher was only part-time. I'm okay with that, then having a white person just learning a few pages while they themselves don't even know that they're racist. I will advise most of you, if not, if nobody has read it yet, to go and read a few books about white privilege. So you actually know and white fragility to actually know what it is that you do have, what is your power? How is it that you always resist toward us even when you are not trying? Because most racist people don't know that they are racist. I meet a lot of people in Cape who talk to me very nicely in some weird type of white people voices that I just smile, but I know, okay, that voice is racist. Why are you talking to me like that? I don't want to be complimented on my English. Guess what? It's a language, it's not a big deal, it's not an accomplishment. I don't want people to approach me and give me the weird smile, oh, poor Muslim lady with her hijab. It's not a punishment, it's a choice. So once everybody has learned, and I don't think it's gonna happen in one day. I'm not saying go and educate yourself today and tomorrow come back as, you know, woke. But I'm saying, let's face it first. Once we have faced it, then we can talk about everything that is being said here. It's all nice on papers. All I'm hearing, all I've been hearing for the last few weeks, the meeting that I've been coming to, it's all nice on paper. I doubt change will happen, maybe because of many years of seeing the same thing over and over. And I have hope that change will happen, but I hope that change will happen in the right way, where there is education, where we can all go back and educate ourselves in what really matters and how to express our thought without it being just a fake smile. I really cannot take any more fake smile from you white people. Come on. Let's be open about what is going on. Admit to the fact that most of you don't really know your privilege. Most of you don't really understand what it means to be Black. And don't speak for me. You can't tell me what it means to be a Black mother if I'm the one who stays up at night while you're sleeping. And your experience are completely different to my experience. I don't want to sound bitter, I don't want to sound angry. Actually, I am angry. I am sounding angry and franchement, I don't care. As long as we facing it, I'll be okay with what we come next. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Next up is Halima. If you can unmute yourself.
Hi.
To be able to speak. Hi, Halima.
Hello, um, so I'm Halima. I graduated last year. Um, my dad's on the school board now, sir, and my sister is Sarah, who spoke. And she took some of the good points away, so. Um, but so I have my brother with me too, Adele. He is a rising freshman. Say hi.
Hello.
Um, so I just wanted to talk about some of the stuff that has been happening for the amount of time that I have been at Cape. And so, but Sisahadi just said a lot of the good points, like about having a class that's for Black history. Because like, for a second, I took Holocaust, my, I think it was junior year, and it was such an amazing class. I learned so much about the Holocaust. I learned so much about um, the Holocaust and the Nazis, all that stuff. And I did not know anything about it, honestly. In that class actually um educated me. So if we had a class for black history that a black teacher um, you know, taught us and taught the students, then that would give them more uh knowledge about the black history and the correct knowledge too, because honestly, the our history teachers that are in the high school are not really educated on the black history, yes, but also like Islam too. Cause like, I remember I was taking, I was um studying like the religions in uh high, in high school and uh the teacher that I had said one, some of this like such bad information and like wrong information about Islam. And then I had to correct him as a student. I had to correct him and say, no, this is not the correct information. And it was not only me, it was my cousin too, had correct the same teacher over and over, saying this is not the correct information. So out there, there's people getting those wrong information and you saying, oh no, those are the right information when it's totally not. So I feel like educating the teachers will be helpful too. And like, I've heard people saying um that the English teachers are saying, are making them say the N-word. And I haven't said the N-word when I'm reading a book, because the teachers I've had um did not say it, did not make me say it, unlike um some other teachers that I have. And just uh, I think those are the two points. And the other is just like people saying the N-word, white people say the N-word is just, it gets me so mad because it's not their word, it's not, you know, um, they should be educated on that too. And it starts at such a young age too, because like my brother comes home and says, oh, my classmates are giving, are asking me for the N-word pass. When he is not even black. He's, he's a, he's a person of color, but he is not black. So people should not be asking him for the N-word pass. And they shouldn't even be saying it. Yeah. And so like, it's just um kind of annoying, because they, at such a young age, kids are being, are saying these racist stuff. And like, they always um, he comes home and says, oh yeah, someone said uh, say terrorist joke, or someone said the N-word, or someone like said, oh, I can say the N-word because I'm brown. No, that's not how it works. Yeah. So I think those are just some of the points that I have uh, I have, but.
There are many students in my grade or in the eighth grade, soon to be ninth grade. Um, they during soccer practices and basketball practices have been saying the N-word. And have been asking me to say the N-word and give them the N-word pass. Which I have not been happy about that. I've been tempted to hurt them sometimes, but I have never actually done it. And yeah.
This is what Islamic jokes are.
Um, I also get told a lot of terrorist jokes. And yeah.
Yeah. And like, I feel like um, as a person who has been bullied too, uh, from almost my entire life, I feel like this is a sign of bullying, especially um getting terrorist jokes. Though like when I was growing, I was called a towel head. I was going, oh, you're hiding a gun in your hijab or whatever. And like, seeing my cousins or siblings gain going through the same thing is just annoying. And my aunt said this too, I'm pretty sure. We have demanded change four years ago and nothing has happened. And sadly, someone has to be killed for you guys to make change. And uh, when, four years ago, when the president was elected, I was told to go back, my brother was told to go back to his country. And there was a, a school bus full of students who did not stand up for him. There was a bus driver who did not stand up for him. And when I was in the hallway, when someone said, oh, now that um Muslims are, that Trump is elected, Muslims can go back to where they belong. And honestly, I, at that moment, I didn't know what to, I did not say anything, because I was just in shock. And when I turned around, it was just a bunch of people. I didn't know who it was, but it was just disgusting how no one stood up for me or knew I was standing right in front of them. And like, I told my dad and I, you know, I just, I learned my lesson to tell my dad, you know, when I'm getting bullied or whatever. So we went to the school board, we went to the principal, nothing happened. And now that George Floyd died, Breonna Taylor died, I'm an Arbery, many of these victims, the black people have died. Now you guys are standing up and wanting to change. And that's all I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing those thoughts. Thank you. Um, up next is Amy Stanley. If you can unmute yourself. There you go. I think you're.
Yep, can you hear me?
Are you there? Yes, thank you, Amy. Yes.
My name is Amy Stanley and I live uh at 10 Abaco Drive in the Oakhurst neighborhood. I have had three children, three children attend Cape schools over the last 12 years, from kindergarten to Poncove uh to high school graduation. Uh, and through the years, I've been a volunteer at, at the schools in many capacities. Uh, in fact, my work for the schools prompted me to go back to school to get my master's in teaching as a history teacher. And I currently teach history at another high school in Cumberland County. And I'm also the, the civil rights faculty advisor. Um, I wanted to speak tonight as a proud yet concerned Cape citizen, as a school's champion and a history teacher, and someone who believes black lives matter. I recognize that we are at an inflection point in our country's and our town's history. And I think the time is now that we take advantage of this opportunity to acknowledge that systemic racism is not just a part of our past, but it continues as a blight and a reality here in Cape Elizabeth, throughout our state and our country. You only have to have heard the words just spoken here by Halima and the words of people of color at the forums over the last weeks. And the testimony at last night's council meeting to understand that. I think we need to take actions to make our schools more welcoming and less hostile for students of color. Uh, and I think it's the school board's role to lead this effort uh and go beyond just general statements of what's been done um and to um come up with specific actions. Um, and one important area I think is history instruction, um, that I can speak to a little bit as a history teacher. I suggest is uh, in my context as a history teacher, that the school board take a deep dive into how, what, and when we deliver social studies curriculum from the kindergarten into uh through uh grade 12. It can't all be on the teachers to decide for themselves what to include and what to exclude from the curriculum. Having taught the US, US history this past school year, there is so much and too much material to cover in a year's time. And I think teachers need direction from the school board uh to, to determine what are the things, what are the pri- priorities we have as a school district for inclusion. Too often, the accomplishments of people of color have been left out. And events that paint a complicated picture of our country's uh white supremacist legacy have been glossed over. These omissions, as we have heard here tonight, have a deleterious impact on black students and students of color. They also, um, these omissions also have negative consequences for all Cape students. Change at the school level is vital to changing society. From what I understand, some state boards of education and interest groups are further along in this area. And I think that Cape, that Cape Elizabeth School Board should study the efforts that have already been made and to decide how to move forward. But in the meantime, um, not just wait for, you know, studying something over the long term. The board should adopt changes related to curriculum that can be put into action right away, starting in the fall. I thank you for your time and your generous commitment to children in this town.
Thank you, Amy. Um. Paul S. had his hand raised if he'd like to jump in now.
Sure. Uh, my name is Paul Sideman and I live at 21 Oakview Drive. I have a few um, few things just to rattle off sort of suggestions or, or things that people of color have brought to me. And then um, and then I'll make sort of a final point. So um, a few things just in listening to what everyone else was saying, especially teachers in terms of what you all are doing. Are, are, are Jews as Jews talked about outside of the context of the Holocaust in a, in a structured way? Do students know about black Jews? If, uh, wondering if you've reached out to Reach um uh, a pro-indigenous group um in Maine who have educational materials. So I wanted to recommend that. I wanted to recommend the practice of land acknowledgement, which Reach can share more with you about uh each day in school or, or if, if the pledge of allegiance is, is done, then perhaps before that. I wanted to mention, uh, ask if Huck Finn and Mockingbird are taught as white hero stories and the problem with that being the case. I wanted to mention a book called Indigenous People's History of the United States for Young People by Roxanne Dunbar Ortiz. And I wondered when patriarchy is talked about critically in the, in the K through 12 system. And um, finally, what I, last night was a town council meeting, a workshop and meeting, and several people of color spoke very passionately, um, including some here who've already spoken. And and the action that was taken was a racist action, which, which um uh, I think they would acknowledge with, with some discussion, which was about signage and what words would go on the sign. And and so one of the, one of the issues I think that's central to um this matter is, for those of us who are white, is to whom are we accountable in the decisions that we make? Because without a real system of accountability to people of color in this community, in terms of, do you feel this will work? What effect do you think this will have? Uh, is this meaningful change? Without that, then what happens, what happened at the town council meeting is what happens, which is you take in all the information, we take it in and make decisions that aren't necessarily even responsive to what has been shared. So I just want to encourage you to, as a, as a matter of course, to, to actively create uh structures of accountability. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for that. Um, next is Eliza Matheson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi. Yes, welcome.
Much of what has already been said has, is what I hope to come to the table with, so I will try and keep this brief. I grew up in Cape Elizabeth. I did Cape 12 here. Um, I moved back there with my family. I have two children who will be going through the Cape system, one of the community. So I'm here for the long haul. I got another one coming up behind. Um, and uh first and foremost, I, I, hearing the stories as of late, um, have been painful and awful to hear. And I want to apologize and say I'm so sorry that we are so late to this. That we have not been doing enough for you and that your experiences have gone unnoticed or without change. And I understand that at the, at many different levels, we have some bystander training. But I think it needs to be incredibly explicit, starting in the Poncove school system about addressing, addressing inequity, addressing bias, addressing all of the power that white people carry in society as part of a racist society. And I don't claim to be an expert in any of this. I'm learning as much as everybody else is, as we go through um my former position, my last position was at Fordham College at the, in the college-wide initiative for um first-year students um coming in, first generation, low-income students of color. And the overwhelming data from Cape 12 and all in the post-secondary is that those students need to be heard and supported through systemic change, not one-offs, not um, you know, this happened and now we fix it. We, as everybody has said, need to be looking, Cape 12, at what we are teaching, what are we modeling, um, and telling our students that they have a responsibility as part of this community to um stand up for their peers and reach out to an adult who can handle, effectively handle the um the situation at hand addition. And that will require training, that will require a huge investment in our staff, in our faculty, in our admin, and have everybody at every level um to have some anti-bias training and how this works. This ideally would be led by um people of color and black people in our community. That's a huge burden and I, I hope that we are not just asking that of them, but of everybody to find their place in this, because there's momentum that's happening. And I hope we don't lose it, because we cannot let our students down anymore. We cannot let our students go through our system doing what they're uneducated about. Not only Black History Month, but enveloping black and indigenous people of color's stories throughout an entire curriculum at every level, in every subject. I um, I love Cape Elizabeth, that's why I'm here. I moved back and um, I hope that we can continue to invest in that, because that is, that is a true investment, I think. And um I will keep showing up and I am excited to see what kind of plans we will make and what kind of results we will get in the future.
Thank you, Eliza. Rafina Young. If you want to unmute yourself. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
No, it's Rafina. It's Greek.
Rafina.
Yeah, it's that simple.
Okay, great. Hi, thank you.
Usually I stand back and I just listen and everything else. That's what I do. Um, and I take things in, but I have to speak up. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize because I do not agree with some of the things that were being said. Um, and what I want to point out, first and foremost, I'm a woman of color. Second, I'm Jewish. Third, I was raised by a parent that was actually white. And um, I take offense to um someone saying a white person cannot teach what it's like to be a person of color. My father did tremendous job at teaching me what it was like to carry my color. Also, I was also taught by a little Italian nun all about black history. She was the best. And so I take offense to that. And um, I want to apologize because I don't agree with um the caller who had, excuse me, the person had, had said about white people and not knowing what it's like. Um. I've been living in Cape Elizabeth for nearly 23 years. I'm very proud to live here. Um, the community has been just absolutely wonderful. I grew up in the greater Portland area, went to Macaulay. Um, my children went to Cheverus. And, you know, we deal with race every single day. And I am very proud that Cape Elizabeth is taking the steps forward, having teachers workshops and everything else. You know, everything takes time. We can't just rush through everything. And um, I am I am proud to, to hear what's, what's, what's going to happen, what's already happened. And I think moving forward, we just need to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. And um like the other students who were talking, you know, I've experienced racism, but there's a time and place. Right now, you know, I came to this meeting because I want to hear what's going to be happening and what has been happening in our community. So, um, with that said, you know, I hope to participate more, um, to see what's going on and, you know, act as a resource. So, thank everybody, um, the teachers, you know, Jeff Shed, uh, Troy and all the other teachers. I sat future search, um, that they had a year and a half ago for, you know, our schools at district. Donna, you're doing a great job. Keep up the good work, Kathy. So, you know, we have to start with a discussion and that's where we're at and we're making progress. So, that's all we can do to, to educate ourselves about what we need to do. So, please don't rush into anything and, you know, I feel for those students and those people because, you know, like I said, I've experienced racism, but at the same time, you know, we have to take baby steps so we don't miss anything and that's where we're at. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for that. I currently don't see any other hands raised besides people who have already spoken and I'm thinking that they may not have put their hands down. Okay. So I'm gonna give it another second to see if anybody else has to speak. Moving on. We have, um, the GSEA Leadership Academy Participants Diversity Equity and Inclusion Survey. Daughter, who is speaking to that? Is that Liz? Is that you, Liz?
Joanna.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. Um, so hello, everyone. My name is Joanna Payne and I teach eighth grade language arts. And next year I'll also be teaching social studies. So, thank you for this conversation, um, as they move forward in that work. Liz?
Yarrington, I teach, um, English at the high school. And Joanna, sorry, I'm gonna go off script real quick. Um, I just, I just wanted to repeat something that Halima said that I found, um, chilling and important. And it was, no one stood up for me. And she said, she said that for herself and she said that for her brother. And I know that there are other students who, who have said that too. And so I think, um, that one line to me underscores the importance of this conversation. Um, and I hope that, you know, I hope we didn't need convincing, but if anyone on the call or in the community needed convincing, I think that should do it. Sorry, Joanna, thank you.
No, thanks. That's good.
So, uh, we're here representing seven teachers from all three schools who attended multi-district leadership training this year through the Greater Cibago Education Alliance. We're here today to share a little bit of our work and also to outline what we believe is essential work for us to move forward as an anti-racist school district.
So when we started this work last August, it was clear to us, um, right away and our group's first meeting that the focus of our work should be inequity and bias in our schools.
We are grateful to Superintendent Wolfram and the school board for allocating funds that helped us begin this work.
As a result of our work together, we created a survey to assess implicit and explicit bias in school staff. However, the school's closure due to COVID-19 prevented us from distributing that survey. Then the March 13th killing of Breonna Taylor, the racist incident against Christian Cooper in Central Park on May 25th, and the killing of George Floyd on the same day demonstrated to our group that the work we started does not match the urgency with which we feel Cape Elizabeth schools must address racism.
On June 6th, our group sent a letter to district leadership outlining clear steps we believe must be taken to start our work to become an anti-racist institution. Our letter was received with support from many teachers in the district who are ready to do this work. Additionally, Superintendent Wolfram and Kathy Stanker took time to meet with us to discuss our perspective. We were also encouraged by school board chair Heather Altenberg's letter to the school community. We support the district taking the following actions.
Professional anti-racism training for all district faculty and staff in 2020. A dedicated district budget for anti-racism training. Time, resources, and training for teachers to examine their curricula through an anti-racist lens. An ongoing professional development in anti-racism.
From our perspective as teachers in Cape Elizabeth, we acknowledge and believe this work will be uncomfortable. As white educators, we must lift up and listen to the voices of our black and brown students and their families. There has been a clear message from the last two protests in town that the Cape Elizabeth School District must address issues of racism.
For too long, we have identified as a white school district and have failed to fully recognize students and families of color in our community. While it is true, we are a majority white school district, we are fully responsible for anti-racist work. The fact that there are fewer students of color in Cape Elizabeth than in other communities does not absolve us from doing the work of anti-racism.
The difficult work of deconstructing our curricula, learning about our own biases and prejudices, and how they have impacted our students in the past is vital, but cannot fall on the shoulders of individual teachers alone.
Teachers must have the support of administration, school leaders, the school board in town. We need a district-wide financial commitment to this work and professional training and development.
The district has a responsibility to clearly communicate with the community about the action steps it will take to address racism in our schools.
And there is potential in this moment. If we don't address this now, we seem ignorant of the fact that our community is demanding change.
We want to thank Superintendent, Superintendent Wolfram and the members of the school board for this workshop. Both Joanna and I are committed to this work and plan to continue to fight for these necessary changes. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions? Gina, you still have your hand up. Is that new? Do you want to speak again? Gina, tap.
Yes, um, I was just wondering how many, um, non-white teachers there are in the Cape Elizabeth School District, if you know what that number is. And I'm speaking with my, I'm an HR director for the city of Portland, so I'm, I'm wondering from a HR perspective, what is, do you have any staff that are diverse in Cape Elizabeth?
I'm not aware of the number. I don't know if other administrators can speak to that.
Um, I don't believe so. We have some, um, some teachers from various countries.
Yep.
Okay, so I would just suggest that that's someplace that we might need to work on and I, I work on it myself. It's a challenge for me to, in my role in Portland, to try to make our staff as diverse as our community and it's really important if we're gonna be serious about this, um, let's get serious about it.
Yeah, we need to examine our recruitment, um, audience. We seem to be getting a lot of people that are very much the same when we recruit, so that's something that we will be looking at. Expanding that audience and, and the area.
We understand, believe me, I'm, I'm trying to do the same thing myself, but I do think it's an important part of this work is, um, if we're gonna say that we believe in this, then we need to get, um, some people that are different than us in on those important roles.
Agreed. Thank you for that, Gina. Yeah. I'd like to invite Jana Zimmerman to speak. If you can unmute yourself, Jana, you should be able to speak up.
Thank you. You could not find my hands up button.
That's okay.
Um, I had heard on, in an ACP town hall that, um, a woman that said, "It's really not up to black people to change our culture. It is up to us." And she said, "If we decide that we want a community that passively and complicitly, allows inequality, any injustice, police brutality, police militarism, if that's okay with us." It's really, the black people have done all that they, and people of color have done all they can do. They're exhausted from trying to educate us and, you know, we've been basically, I'm not sure what the current term for, but, you know, not educable. So, um, we've been resistant to learning. And I did want people to know that, um, let's see. And I did want people to know that obviously I'm a white person. And, um, but I came from Texas, which basically still lives to a great degree, though they've made changes. So for example, in our old neighborhood, um, which had been owned by the Mexican family that lived next door. There's a Latina family that lived right next door, all from Mexico. They used to own the entire area, but people had moved out and white people had moved in. The schools were named, we could choose from Stonewall Jackson or Robert E. Lee for the elementary schools. You could go to Robert E. Lee Park. There were statues everywhere. The, um, when I was working as a psychologist at a state hospital, I asked, um, I sent a letter to the state, uh, office and asked them, "Help me understand how I'm supposed to choose between Confederate Heroes Day and Martin Luther King Birthday." At the same time, they supposedly were offering Juneteenth, but it was never offered to us that I recall. And people did not even understand why I'd even be asking. We should be lucky to get Martin Luther King Birthday from their perspective. So I, I actually grew up in West Texas and it was like as if apartheid was there. And I still think that apartheid exists. If you cannot leave your home, if you cannot ride your bike, if you cannot ride your skateboard, if you cannot go bird watching in Central Park, if you cannot be at your own house putting a Black Lives Matter sign up, that's apartheid. And, um, if you're not free to be as safe and as free as a white person closest to you, that's apartheid. And so, and I may not have the exact definition, but I prefer to think of it that way. And Cape Elizabeth has been a wonderful place to us. Um, the Peterson's clothed my child when we see, when he came, um, for years. And, um, the, you know, all of our friends are very accepting when, um, my son joined our family when he was four and he's a child of color. So if we had known, if I had anticipated that he was going to, to join us, we would have never moved to Cape Elizabeth. The first thing I thought when we saw this place was I thought, oh my God, I have never been in such a white place. There is no diversity. There's no color, this 17 years ago. We waited patiently, impatiently for it to look like home. We lived five minutes out of downtown Dallas, um, when we moved from there. So, so it's been a wonderful place. But I wouldn't have moved here because my child of color, um, you know, it's a, it's a disadvantaged child, I think. Um, the, but the other thing that I think is that implicit bias is everywhere. So I'm gonna tell you a story from his elementary school years. The counselor, I did not, I was not told he was in counseling. I was not told that he was being picked up for a group and it took up his lunch period. The only time this child liked at school, he was being pulled out of the lunchroom. Well, he liked PE, of course, and recess, but, um, was lunchtime where he could chat with his friends. The counselor thought it was a good idea to ask him to invite his friends, but he was incredibly embarrassed by the whole thing. And I wasn't, I wasn't told that he was in there and he actually refused one time to go. And he sat with his friends and he wouldn't move. So this is the first time I learned he's getting counseling, is that my child was defiant and the most defiant child she's ever seen. Now, I don't think she knew at the time that I was white, but maybe she did, maybe she didn't. But that was incredibly implicit bias based on a very small sample of his behavior. And, um, that, um, I don't know that she would have done with a white child. And the fact that she was seeing my child without my knowledge or my permission, well, they got to hear about it. And I had his file destroyed, I hope. Um, I told him to. So, I don't, I think that those things happen to children of color. I think they happen to families of color. And, and I think that the impression she had of my child of color was incredibly biased. You know, I don't think other children, and of course, this is all speculation on my part. But looking back, there have been a number of things that have happened over the years that I think people acted with implicit bias and are intentional bias. And believe me, I've seen them both and I've engaged in both. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that, that I think it does happen. I'm very embarrassed that, the stories that I heard and I reached out to those families last night, that, that I didn't take, I didn't understand at all. I didn't understand the extent of the racism, very sorry. I think it's time we all stand up and speak up for these families and, um, thanks very much. And thank you, Heather. Appreciate you letting me do that.
You bet. Thank you. Um, I believe Rafina has her hand raised again. Is that correct? Would you like to speak again?
Yes, um, I would just like to know Gina, um, question for Gina. Why do you think it's important to hire a teacher of color?
I think that it's important for kids of color to go to a school where they see people that are like them. I think it's important that anyone that goes to work sees people like them. It's just, uh, something I think is important. And I think if there are, if you live in a place where there are qualified people of color, then I think we can make an attempt to make them part of, of our community, to look like our community. If we live someplace where it's impossible for that to happen, I know it's very hard for that to happen, but where we are now, there are people of color all around us, many of who are very qualified. And I think we could do better at bringing them into our schools and our businesses and our, every, every organization we're in. I want to see, I want to see our kids look around them and see, oh, I can do that. There's somebody like me. That's, that's what I'm getting at.
Understand, understand. As, as a woman of color, as, who used to be a child, to me, it didn't make a, a difference whatsoever whether I saw somebody like me. Um, when we took trips down to Boston, I actually grew up in Europe and came over here when I was 14. And so I saw a little bit of both. And growing up and being the only drop of color everywhere I went, it was different. But at the same time, it was just what it was. And do I feel it's important? Um, no, I don't. I just think what matters to me is whether or not that individual, you know, cares and loves and respects me. But I, I understand your point of view. I just wanted to know why you thought that. Because I'm the person that you're, you're speaking for and I understand what you're saying. I don't always agree with that. And also, you know, when you're looking at Donna to hire people, she's hiring whoever's qualified. You know, I, I end, and to, not that you're saying this, but maybe there hasn't been any- but maybe there hasn't been anybody that's come through that's a person of color. It was like at Future Search, one of the things that annoyed the mess out of me at Future Search, they kept saying, "We need to have more diversity in Cape Elizabeth." Me, I, I found a house. I live here. Melanie is here. She found a house. Anybody else can cross over the bridge, over the border, and buy a house in Cape Elizabeth. But to sit there and say, "We need to have more Black people," are we going to build houses and say, "Everybody, come on in," you know? No, that, we have a choice of where we want to live. We're five miles, you know, into Portland, you know, and, but I think every, everything we're doing here is all for the good, but sometimes it scares me because, you know, there's a person who is speaking on behalf of people of color, and I'm one of those, but I don't always agree with it. And I, I appreciate it, I appreciate it immensely. But sometimes turn around and ask, you know, "What do you think?" And I know you have a daughter and everything else, you know, but, you know, Maine is such a unique place. You know, when the KKK came to Matt March, they, they, all the white people, I hate that word, all the, all the people, you know, who are here, they're like, "Get out, because this is not what, what we're about." French, Native Americans, Italians, you know, Irish. And but, anyway, not to stay off subjects, but I appreciate what you're saying, and I just wanted to know your point of view from it. Thanks.
I would love my daughter to meet you. And I certainly, I certainly love your perspective. And I hope my daughter loves me as a white mom because I love her, not because I'm white or black. And, uh, I'd love her to meet you, I'd love to get to know you. Thank you for sharing that with me.
Thank you. And also, we do, um, Donna, we do have one member of staff who is kind of like this side, Galvin? Officer Galvin? Yeah, everybody forgets about him because he shaves his head. And I said, I said, "Galvin, you don't tan up very well." Galvin is 100% Mexican. And he's the school resource officer in, um, in the high school. And, yeah, so, there is one person.
So, um, a new softball coach that didn't coach fully. This year's hire, I think, um, Elizabeth can speak to it. Am I correct? She's got a daughter on the softball team.
I know it feels a little late to the, the conversation about staff, but, um, because my daughter is a softball player, um, we were super, super excited that not only a young woman of color, but it's, it's a young woman, and it's a recent softball grad. So, it, I mean, we do, we have, you know, a little raise of hope here and there of, um, diversity and, you know, it's a recent hire. So, like I said, it's, it's hope, it's a good thing. And it's a young woman of color with our young women.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, we have Margaret Brown, Br- I'm sorry, Brownlee. Margaret Brownlee up next to speak. And if you can unmute yourself, Margaret, you should be able to have the floor.
Did you say my name?
I said Margaret, yeah, I did.
Okay, I'm, okay, I wasn't, I wasn't, sure. I'm multitasking at its best. Okay, so, my name is Margaret Brownlee. Um, I'm not a resident of Cape Elizabeth, so let's just put that out there. I actually live in South Portland. Um, but I do know Eliza and a couple of other people on the call. And I was excited to join this because I saw on Facebook, and I love the topic. Um, I'm also facilitating a conversation about diversity, equity, and inclusion in education. Um, a little bit about me. So, I currently work at Southern Maine Community College in Career Services, where I help students find jobs and internships. But I'm studying for my doctorate at UNE in Educational Leadership. And I've worked with elementary school kids, middle school kids, which, whoo, you know, whoever works with middle school kids, whoo, that's a lot. Um, high school and now college level. And so, I have like this wide range of experience working in education. But I see a lot of parallels to kind of the things that you all are talking about going on in Cape Elizabeth. It's also happening in South Portland and is also happening at the college level. Prior to working at SMCC, I worked at USM, and I've worked at other institutions as well. So, um, I guess, in the quick amount of time that I have to share, just a quick story. So, I was born and raised here in Maine. Um, left for a couple, like 11 years, came back. And, you know, Portland is different. The demographics have changed quickly, and it's changing all the time, which I love. There's definitely more people of color, more races, ethnicities, genders, like, um, religious backgrounds, it's just really diverse. And I'm happy and proud that you all are having this conversation. I was impressed with some of the information that was shared with the curriculum changes. I have a background in curriculum and instruction. And so, I basically, what I'm just, I want to say is, I hope what you all are doing in Cape Elizabeth is also being shared with South Portland Public Schools and the Maine Community College system and the university system because we're all struggling with the same issues. Like, you're not, I don't mean to sound rude, but this is not unique. You know what I mean? This is something that's happening in every school district. And I think a lot of the resources that you've shared tonight are incredible. And, um, there's still a long way to go, but you all are like in the right direction. And, um, I don't know a ton about K-12. I don't, I don't, like, I'm not a teacher, a certified teacher. But it's really nice to see because, um, you know, I just have seen the changes in, in Maine, and it's just, it's really refreshing. I think, um, you know, COVID has made us like slow down and reflect on life. I've definitely slowed down and reflected a little bit more myself, being home and, um, working from home. And it's just, it's really nice to see. So, that's it.
Thank you for joining us and for speaking up. Uh, Audra Gore, if you want to unmute yourself, you've got the floor.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm hoping, we were talking about that there's a lot of hard work and uncomfortable work ahead of us. And I think an aspect that I'm hoping to see that is going to be some growing pains for the school and the community is finding a better way of communicating together. And in certain aspects, when I'm saying raising our kids, I, I mean, we're the parents, but they go to school during the day. So, there's this, this joint aspect. And some of what's happening at school is known by teachers. And it's, yet it's not communicated to parents. And, um, that's happened in lots of different bullying scenarios where I didn't find out that my son had even gone to the principal until a year later. So, there, there's this communication piece that I'm hoping can be a part of this because this is not just a school issue, it's a community issue. And it shouldn't, I don't want it to be about punishment, but it needs to be about support. And if my child is making overtly racist comments, I, as a parent, want to be able to help parent him through that and know that, and grow and learn together. So, I, I'm hoping that part of this hard work we're going to do is finding a way to, to not be the school and parents, that this, this has to be together. So, I'm hoping that can be the hard work, too.
Thank you for that point and perspective. Um, Melanie Thomas again, your hand is raised.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, so, I, I just wanted to touch bases one more time. I was not going to speak again. Um, but Rafina had brought up some things. And I, I happen to disagree. I, I think we 1,000% need, um, to go seek out some professionals that are just as qualified to teach at Cape Elizabeth and find them, the same way we recruit anybody else. Put some effort into stealing them or finding them from other states and, and open that up immediately. I am here, I, I cannot afford a house here in Cape Elizabeth. I am here on subsidized housing, and I'm a single mom, a disabled mom. So, I, I want to make that known because we would not be here if it wasn't for affordable housing. Um, and, uh, my kids and I were amazing. My kids are smart, uh, we belong here, but we happen to be here for reasons that are different than many others. So, I just wanted to be open and honest and transparent about that. I, I also think you need to get more biased training and that from people of color. I, again, I think, um, early on, at Pond Cove, needs, um, immediate action to address some issues and some understanding with kids. My daughter has had two issues, one in kindergarten and one in second grade. A child, a child that did not want to play with her at recess because of her color. And then a outspoken child, a boy who, uh, in the lunch line, was talking about slavery and how my daughter wouldn't even be able to have any rights. And, you know, do I know how that has impact, impacted her right now? No, I don't. Was that handled well? I believe so. But will it affect her probably? Yes. Um, and, and that needs to change. So, I, I want more for her so that she has more of an opportunity later. She needs to see more color here, more diversity. And that could start immediately, and that could start with the school. So, I, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Uh, Halima has raised her hand again. Are you there, Halima?
Hi, yes. Sorry, I am on the phone with Hadidja. Her phone died, and she would like to say some stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, Hadidja, you, you want to speak now? Okay, one second, please.
Okay.
All right.
Hello?
All right, okay, so I am meeting myself. I'm Hadidja, so you can speak.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Go ahead, we're listening.
Hi. Thank you for having me again.
Yes.
My first phone died, so I'm driving and reaching for my second phone. I wanted to mention something. I want to address, um, the other lady who spoke before. She said something about, um, a, a white nun who was able to teach African-American history to her and the fact that her dad, who's white, taught her how to be black. That's one booklet in the sea, in the ocean. That cannot be what we're trying to accomplish or what we're gonna talk about. She got privileged for having that, that who stood up for her. Privilege comes in many forms and shapes. It's because I'm pretty, I'm privileged because I'm tall, I'm privileged because I got an education. And if I can't acknowledge those privileges that I have, then I'll be going against my own people. When I see another African woman, I have to acknowledge that I was able to get further than her in life because of my privilege. So, privilege is not just being white. In America, yes, being white takes you places. And everywhere else comes with many forms and shapes. I really want to point out and insist on the fact that I feel if we're going to be teaching at school, we should get African-American teachers to teach African-American history. If we're going to teach Islam, we need to get a Muslim to teach Islam. If we're going to teach about anything else, the people who are concerned, the people who are in charge of it should be the people who experienced that. It can't be, doctors are the one who teach medicine. I mean, come on, you don't go to school, you don't go to school and try to learn how to be a doctor, and then your economic teacher come and like, "Okay, if we cut here and there, it would be four plus two." It doesn't work like that. Anyway, thank you again for listening.
Yes, thank you. And I, I just want to point out and remind everyone that we all have our own opinions. We're here to respect opinions, listen to one another. And, um, I really appreciate listening to everybody. So, just a reminder that we all want to be respecting what other people are saying. And I, and in, in that is hearing opposite sides at times. Um, and I am hearing a little bit of that. So, um, I don't see other hands being raised. So, I'll just take one more moment to see if anybody else would like to speak. Okay. So, next on the agenda is ideas for moving forward. And this is a discussion portion of the agenda. I'm going to make a suggestion that I feel like there were a lot of things brought up tonight. There was a lot of conversation, a lot of fantastic ideas. I would like to, and I'm open to discussion with Donna and, uh, school boards who are here to maybe go through and compile those suggestions and maybe share that document somehow. Um, I'm, I'm partly recognizing, I don't want to, I don't want to take away from the conversation. I think this is a very rich and important conversation, but after two hours, I, I start to get fuzzy. Like, I can only, I can only do so much, and I think there's others that are like that. So, I also want to respect people's time. I feel like right now is not the best time to start with ideas moving forward and having a discussion on that. Um, I, I think either we set up another time to meet and have that discussion, or we work to compile it. And I'm seeing some school board members raise their hands, so I'm going to call on Phil to start with. Um, I'd love your input on this.
Yeah, thank you, Heather, and I don't, sorry to speak twice. I just, I just want to quickly, um, one suggestion, um, and, uh, based on your, your question, and then just, but one comment first, because I just wanted to acknowledge, um, and I think we didn't do that yet, the teachers' Joanna and Liz's presentation. I read the, I read the letter. I, I try as a school member not to engage on email in a substantive way, so I waited to the public meeting. But I thought it was a very thoughtful letter, and I appreciated all five of your suggestions. I think we should all work towards them. I will commit myself to working towards them as a school board member in the way that's appropriate. And some, and some of those things, I think, are, were of the administration to work on, but I will view my work through that lens and through the lens of what I've heard tonight from members of the community. So, I just want to make that comment and to acknowledge that. And my son's teacher was one of the signatories, too, and that was heartwarming to see. My suggestion, Heather, because I agree with you. Um, I think I'd like to sort of see a compilation of what we've heard and digested. But my, my one suggestion, and I, the chair of my own department that runs meetings, and what I try to do is if you don't put on agendas every single time, you forget about it. And I'd like to have this topic be a recurring item for a while and, and not a special meeting or another workshop. And, and maybe it's the workshop top, topic for our, you know, our monthly workshop. But to not let it drop off and to force us to continue to come back and revisit, revisit this, this conversation going forward. So, that's just my one suggestion on, on that. But I agree with you, at this point, I'd like to see a compilation and revisit at the next meeting.
Thank you. Um, I see that Hope has her hand up. I can't hear you yet. You're unmuted, but try. You're unmuted, but try it again, Hope. I can't. Ask to unmute. Oh. Try it again. Can you speak? I don't know why you're not coming through. Okay. Is it something Hope perhaps that you could type into the chat box, or is it too long? Nazar's laughing in the air. I'm not sure. No, I still can't hear you. Do you want to try calling me on my cell? No. Oh. What do I hear? Not you. Never mind. Okay. Um. It shows that you're not muted. I wonder if you pop off the call and try to come back in? And I can readmit you. Thank you for everybody's patience for a moment. I would like to see what Hope would like to contribute. In the meantime, check out the chat. There is a lot being communicated. She's probably muted by her hardware. Okay, she's trying to come in. Thank you, Mimi. She's back. She's connecting to audio. Hope?
Hello?
There she is, yay!
I'm using my computer now. Now I forgot what I was gonna say.
You can't.
So I just reiterate everything that Phil said. I am so appreciative of the teachers making Joanna and Elizabeth. Your presentation is excellent. And all the information about what we're doing is excellent. I want to thank the participant Khadija for being so frank, and I'd love to know what that creepy smile looks like. And I think that really kind of talks to, one of the things I don't think that's on our to-do list, which is getting that, this frank feedback. Like, this is something, we haven't had this frank conversation, and we can talk a lot about curriculum, and we can pat ourselves on the back as like good white people and give ourselves gold stars, but until we ask the people of color in the district, how is it going? Like, we don't know, you know, so I think one of the things I'd want to see on our to-do list is getting that pulse, like over time, what is the experience like for those people? Because until we get that feedback, you know, the best boss I ever had always said to me, how am I doing? How am I doing? How can I do better? We have to ask those people, how are we doing? And that's it. Thank you for waiting for my technical problems to resolve.
Yeah, thank you, Hope. Elizabeth, you have your hand raised again.
I wanted to agree with your suggestion that we compile the suggestions made and find another time, because not only is my computer dying, but my brain is too. And I also wanted to, I feel like we're echoing and echoing, but I I'm so thankful to the teachers for the work that was done in the presentation. I too carefully read those emails and I was really excited to know that you're going to present tonight. I'm thankful that everybody that was willing to speak spoke tonight, even if it was hard. It was certainly, you know, I'm sure it's hard that people have to tell their stories over and over again, and it's hard to hear. It hurts my heart. So thank you for everybody for participating. And I also wanted to kind of single out Audrey Gore, because I believe that this is a partnership. I was a teacher, I am a school board member, and I'm a mother, and so we have to do this together. You know, children aren't born thinking and saying these things that might be very hurtful. They may learn them at home, they may learn them at school, but you know, it's a partnership. So I appreciate that you made that point that we're in this together. We need to do this work together. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm just responding to everyone. Audrey Gore was wondering what the email was that Phil that, that they had compiled an email with asks, steps that you would like to see the district take. And that email was sent to the superintendent and myself, and other, just not myself, I'm sorry, this is the late night coming in. And that is what the email is, that's the email was being referred to. So it wasn't a public, but it wasn't out to the community. It was asking us to follow through with certain steps forward, and that was just... I'm reading. Donna, how do we that one? I think we could maybe, my computer's freezing a bit here.
Yeah.
I don't know if people can hear me.
I can't hear what you're saying, really.
Yeah. My computer is starting to get tired.
Heather, Nazar wants to talk.
Heather, can you not see me?
Nazar, why don't you, why don't you go ahead?
I can now, Nazar.
I've been raising my hand on the camera, and I've been raising hand virtually, and I thought there was going to be something going on here technically. So I have multiple hats to wear.
I'm sorry about that, Nazar.
Well, I have multiple hat to wear, and one is of course being a school board, one is being on the Cape Diversity Coalition, and one is being a parent of my two daughters who spoke eloquently, and my sister. And those are the people I have to deal with at a dinner table, at movies, on a car ride, at sports, and they're constantly, constantly educating me, constantly. And constantly reminding me, what have you done while you on the school board? So I guess I'm gonna speak as a parent first, and then at the end I'm gonna speak as a school board member. So indeed, I joined the school board because of Halima and Hamza. And I spoke yesterday in a workshop, and it was an emotional speech, and I'm not gonna give the emotional attack over here. I gotta be stronger. And so, just a short story. Changing Cape Elizabeth takes time. I agree with Rafina and Ruffus to that. Change takes time. I agree with Rafina, because she's, I don't think, she has a lot of white hair. She's not my age, but I pretend that I'm her age. That we, we went through a lot of hardship, and our hearts were stronger against racism. I told her day and night, day and night, to my kids, they're not gonna believe that. Dad, that was your time. Boomer, that was your time. This is our time. We want change now. We want change yesterday. So those are the energy these kids have, and I applaud that. I'm not gonna stop them from that. Not Rafina's case, not my case, not Melanie's case. So this is what the diverse is all about, guys, having a different opinion. We at the Cape Diversity Coalition have been existing since the last four years, and we still struggle to this day to come with a common vision or single vision or single voice, because we represent Judaism, we represent religions, we represent continents, we represent cultures, we represent personal opinions and so forth. So Melanie here has been lucky or privileged or that grew up with wonderful parents, wonderful parents. And we have, I'm sorry, that was, I meant Rafina. And Melanie, maybe possibly, an African-American. Khadija is immigrant African-American. I'm an immigrant Afghan, from Afghanistan, and my kids are American, but they were hijab. They're Muslim. They're target for that reason. So it's great to have opinions, and it's great to have this conversation, as Hope said and others have said. This forum, no one, we, when I joined the school board, we just had a staff and my family had a conversation. But if these forums are more available on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, the conversation like this would rise. No one knows what's going on in the locker rooms. No one's going, knows that what conversation or joke takes place with my kids or others. No one knows when to stand up for other people. So I do have a lot of comments, but they just would like to end with the effect of the fact that what change have I brought? Now, the reason I didn't want to face, bring out my face up here, because I felt quote-unquote shame for the people who are here, especially the colored people, that I haven't done enough. And to tell you the truth, I haven't done enough. The simple thing that I've wanted, a simple thing that Heather knows, that Mr. Shet knows, and Donna knows, and Mr. Shet has actually said to me, when is Ramadan coming up, so we can put it in the calendar? We've discussed it in an email, we discussed it publicly, and actually, Mr. Shet, I was exhilarated. I'm the type of person, I have to mention things once. I don't push things. That's my personality. I don't push. I mention once, and then I leave it to you guys to be educated, as the one person said. Last time, my whole conversation was about, all my life, I've been educated people around me, all my life, for what I've been here in this country for 33 years or so. So to have that, when is Ramadan celebrated, when is Eid celebrated, does make a big difference for my kids, being a Muslim, being a Hijabi. It makes a big difference. But imagine if that calendar is in the parents' hands, they say, oh, what's Ramadan? What the hell is Ramadan? Or imagine a kid inquiring another kid, what is Ramadan about? This is how you learn. This is how you interact. This is how you open conversations. So yes, it's a minor thing, it's a small thing, but it has a lot of positive aspects. So indeed, as a school board member, we have worked on curriculums, we have done a great job, we have wonderful staff, we have a great staff. And John's Holdridge position is awesome, awesome. He's taking kids to Wingfleet, he's taking kids around, he's educating people. Great, great curriculum. And so it does not just end with a curriculum. It's just not. It's the daily activity. How do we correct the locker rooms? How do we correct conversation in the fields, sports fields? How do we correct conversations that the parents are having at the sports? How do we correct that people yelling at racist slurs at sports games, which has happened? And those are the things that the book does not teach you. Those are the things that a training might teach you. Those are the things you learn from your students. Someone has, I think Hope said, somebody said here, let's bring our students, those who have been harassed. Let's have a dark conversation with them. So it is a great school system. We are all here for education. Unfortunately, education for all of us is number one priority, and we are willing to take racism, we're willing to be bullied, we're willing to be isolated, we're willing to be the sole person, because the education here is great. As my daughter Halima said, let's take a step further and make it more welcoming for everybody. So I do not know which hat I wore, but I think I wore multiple hats, and I was, I'm proud to be on the board, and and I actually want to applaud the HR from City of Portland for hiring the best two people, and that's me and my sister. So yes, it does, diversity does make a difference. Yes, diversity does bring a change. Whether you like it or not, a different opinion is always welcome. Everybody here had a great idea. Yesterday, yesterday, a lot of people, in the yesterday workshop, a lot of people had common ideas. This one person said that, what about the other side? The system is great. No change needs to be made, and it's minor. But I even welcome that person's opinion, and I welcome everybody's opinion here. Without the diversity, we're not gonna grow. And the reason the diversity does exist is to have a challenged conversation like this tonight. So I applaud everybody for dedicating their time tonight and for listening. But I really hope that we can continue to have this dialogue in the future on a regular basis, especially with students. And that is one of the goal of the Cape Diversity as well. So if you want to include those people, that organization, by all means, welcome them to. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Nazar. And my apologies, I did not see your hand raised. Apologies. I am looking. Phil's hand is still up, but my thinking is that it just didn't go back down. And that looks like that's all the comments. I'm gonna end by saying this is to be continued. It feels like there is complete consensus, though varying opinions perhaps. There is definitely the desire, it sounds like, to move forward with making this a regular part of the conversation. Without a doubt, and we're gonna try to make that happen. So we'll put together some potential future steps. We'll have more conversation. We'll announce it. We'll let people know. I too found this forum quite beneficial. As Elizabeth had mentioned, my heart aches for some of the stories that I heard. But I feel very grateful that I was able to be a part of the conversation and hear those stories. I am just very grateful for everyone. At one point, we had up to 45 people here, I think. So that's also a testament to say that this is important to a lot of people. And if we don't have the remembrance of the connection of humanity that we are, nothing else really matters. Like, that really has to be at the heart, caring about one another in this way. So with that, I'll say goodnight. Thank you again for being here. Please stay in the conversation with us and continue to check in and share your thoughts. I know that my email box is always open. My phone is always open if you ever want to talk or share. So I will do my best to sort of take your information and or your thoughts and your ideas and incorporate it, so. All right. Thank you again. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.